Good evening. At this time, the Board is returning from our special meeting and I would like to entertain a motion for an adjournment of that meeting. No business was conducted. We have a motion by Mrs. Thomas.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses. Mr. Pecanowicz, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Here.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Here.
Mrs. Moses?
Here.
Mr. Patton?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This will be our first opportunity for public comment. In accordance with Board policy 0169, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. Anonymous statements are not permitted. No person may address or question Board members individually, as the Board does not directly address public comment. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. No participant may speak more than once at a time unless all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to be heard. In order for the Board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective, efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation will be permitted at each meeting. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the Board. Just as a message to our audience, Board members do receive and review the agenda and accompanying explanation during the week prior to the Monday Board meeting. At this time, if you would like to make a comment, please step to the microphone and state your name and address.
And just as a reminder, I'll be the person timing the three minutes. When you reach two minutes, I'll put my hand up so that you know you have one minute remaining.
My name is Nick Such, 5236 Cheswick Drive, Solon. I'd like to do a little demonstration today. Imagine we're going back in time at school. We're going to do a little storytime. You probably noticed something missing from my short storytime today. I just showed you the pictures. With no language, a story could not be communicated. This is what my daughter experienced at Solon Schools. She was born deaf. She uses American Sign Language to communicate. Storytime for her was just the pictures. We asked Solon Schools to provide my daughter with an American Sign Language interpreter. To my surprise, your administrators said no. Sign Language might be disruptive to the other students' education. They might pay more attention to my daughter's interpreter than the classroom teacher. So, no, we don't want that here. We asked again. You said we needed data that proves she needs Sign Language. We asked again and again. You found different ways to say no. All the while, my daughter went to school with no language, with no adults around her to understand her requests or to explain to her what was going on. Later, we got some advocates to help us fight for Ivy's right to access education at Solon Schools. We got your administrators to reluctantly post an interpreter job for my daughter, but then no one applied. There is a shortage of educational interpreters that has been well documented for many decades in Ohio. We offered several alternatives that many other districts use in these instances, like letting Ivy go on a bus to a different district, using a qualified substitute, and finally, we asked replacement at Ohio School for the Deaf in Columbus. Your response to all of these alternatives was no. Solon's plan for my deaf child was to continue to go to school with no ASL interpreter. You told us to wait. Ivy is making great progress. Does she really need this? Are you sure she won't just start talking? Statements like these that were said to us are discriminatory against the deaf community and my daughter. While there is a second part to my demonstration from the beginning, while my daughter was at school looking at the pictures, I learned to sign these books. Ivy did not sit to look at the pictures at home. Now, Ivy and Dad, we could sign these stories together. We could both understand. And the epilogue to this story is that my address will no longer be in Solon because we are moving out. Your discrimination against this diverse learner, your attorneys that you brought to the IEP meetings to fight back against our requests, our plea for an ASL interpreter, got us to the point where we felt it was better to move out, to move to another district that will allow Ivy access to her language. So, in the end, Ivy will grow up in a world with Sign Language despite your best efforts to shut her out at Solon Schools.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Board?
My name is Pastor Joe Dixon from North Royalton. I work with Ivy and her dad and her brothers and sisters. My address, 7923 Abbey Road, North Royalton. My name is Pastor Joe Dixon, and I work at Grace Church in Middleburg Heights, Ohio, and I work for the Deaf Church, and the name is Science of Grace Deaf Church. And what many people don't realize is that the deaf have their own culture and have their own language called ASL. And what many people don't realize is that for many deaf people, their first language is ASL and English is second. And so, what we do at the church is we encourage ASL in children like Ivy, and we try to teach them, as well as children of deaf parents. What we encounter in hospitals or school boards is a lot of misunderstanding about what deafness does. It's not only a disability, but it's also a culture that has a unique language in itself called ASL. This is the reason why Solon High School has ASL classes themselves. And when ASL is not provided or not given as an option to a child, when parents ask for it, then not only does it become oppression, but the law gets broken. This is the reason why we have the ADA law, which allows for reasonable accommodation to be made for those with disabilities. However, reasonable accommodation cannot be decided by a school board or a hospital. It has to be decided by the deaf individual and the parents, especially in the IEPs. So, my hope is that going forward, Solon School Board will recognize the need for deaf to have access to ASL, to have access to interpreters, and to do everything that they can to ensure access to future deaf students in the future. Did you...my timer?
Not yet. You have one more minute.
Okay. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything to bring to the Board?
My name is Brian Naraki. I live at 5740 Spring Grove Drive, and I've lived in Solon and am a product of the Solon School System since the first grade. Mrs. Glavine, you may remember I delivered your family the Solon Herald Sun when I was my son's age. As a school board, you're charged with making sure our children have made available to them all the tools necessary for a top-quality education. Some important aspects of learning is communication. The self-imposed mask requirements for our kids is counterproductive to this learning mechanism. Two aspects of communication that are being withheld of our children are verbal communication through facial reactions and recognition, and the ability to actually hear and discern who and what is being said in classroom environments. In the last Board meeting, I couldn't tell who was even speaking through most of the meeting. I had to look to one side of the room to see where the voices were coming from and study each member's mask for job movement just to be able to distinguish who is speaking. This mask requirement is ridiculous and unneeded, and it's also unreasonably enforced. During my attendance at the last school board meeting, I found out that the Board really doesn't believe in what they're requiring our students to suffer either. I say this because I looked at each of you with your freshly opened paper masks done during the meeting for show and solidarity, but as soon as most of the attendees had left and the cameras were turned off, I saw Mrs. Glavine with her mask off the side of her face and hanging from her ear, and Mr. Patton with the mask down around his chin speaking with other Board members. The fact that each of you had the same brand-new mask on your faces picked up at the doorway on your way in, apparent by the fresh and crisp folds in these masks, and not the fashionable cloth masks that many have opted to accessorize with, is evidence that you don't believe in your own mandates. Many people see right through your facade. To make matters crazier, the enforcement of this mask requirement is absurd. Masks must be worn on the bus, in class, in the halls, but they may be removed for gym, band, recess, and lunches where the overall group numbers are equal to or higher than the regular classroom environment. What logic has been used to arrive at this sort of half-hearted implementation? Our children mostly all play together at home in our neighborhoods with no masks and no deadly health repercussions. We have no issues, no deaths, and in fact, children are very resistant to this flu. My wife's a teacher at the independent school system where their Board has had the courage and the fortitude to leave the decision of whether or not to mask up their children to the parents. This is and always has been the right approach on how parents should be raising their children. My question to the Board is, when are you going to stop torturing our children with these masks? It's unhealthy for anyone to rebreathe moist bacterial air all day long. If you feel you're keeping children safe by requiring them to wear these masks, your guidance is poorly researched. You know what's right, or at least you should know what's right. Do the right thing for our children. Find the courage within yourselves. Stand up and make the right decision. End this silly misguided practice today. Members of the Board peeling off your masks as soon as the last Board meeting adjourned proved to me that you yourselves don't take this seriously. Do what's right for our children and their education. Find the courage and do the right thing. End your self-imposed mask mandate for our students. Parents are still afraid of this flu and want...
I'm speaking. Please don't interrupt.
Your time is up, sir.
If parents are still afraid of this flu and want their kids to wear masks, let parents decide for themselves. My family's decision would be to let my children breathe fresh oxygen and improve their learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything they'd like to discuss? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. Moving into Treasurer's Report, item A1, Approval of Minutes. Recommended motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 15, 2021. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Mrs. Thomas.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Pecanowicz, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. Item A2, Approval of Bills. Recommended motion to approve the payment of bills totaling $25,396.39 as noted in enclosure A2. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mr. Patton.
Do you want to talk about the district? Camera replacements?
Do you want to talk about any of the bills?
Tax budget for 2022.
No, the bills, they're still...
Nope. The bills that we have right now are just focused on security and safety. A lot of camera replacements, some software that we needed to have for the updating of security. Obviously, as you can see, with what happened in Michigan, we need to continue to maintain that. Unfortunately, our taxpayers have approved a levy that allowed us to use monies strictly for safety and security personnel as well as physical plant updates, and that's where these purchases are from.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Pecanowicz, call the roll, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item A3, Tax Budget for 2022-23. Recommended motion to approve the tax budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year as noted in enclosure A3. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mr. Heckman?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses.
Yes, it's that time of the year again. This is an annual requirement placed on us by the State of Ohio, and we submit this. School districts need to submit this to the county auditor by the middle of January. And this tax budget is very similar to last year's. There hasn't been any change in levy status, debt millage status, what have you. This is a way for us to reconcile with the county auditor's office in Cuyahoga County, the taxes that we are expecting to receive as far as, not the dollar amount, but the millage. I would like to point out that there is a statement too. It's just simply a statement of fund activity, giving the county auditor's office an idea of where all of our funds are regarding our fund balance, anticipated revenues, expenses. And one final piece I would like to point out is for a school district in Ohio, we're doing a pretty decent job paying down our debt, and here, within a few years, all debt millage will be completely repaid and paid off.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
That concludes the Treasurer's Report. Moving into the Superintendent's Report, item B1, Contract. Recommended motion to approve a contract with the Solon Board of Education and Betsy Street to serve as the Superintendent's Secretary for the period of two years and six months commencing on January 3, 2022, ending June 30, 2024, as noted in enclosure B1. May I have a motion, please?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Thomas, second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, as you recall, this is our last week for Karen Yasher, who was our Superintendent's Secretary for more than two decades. Spectacular job, and she's going to be greatly missed. Betsy Street was actually the Assistant Superintendent's Secretary prior to taking this job, and I convinced her to come over and be my secretary, and we're very excited to have her come over and try to fill Karen's very big shoes, and we're excited to have her start at the first of the year. She's been training with Karen for the last several weeks, and she is ready to pick up the gauntlet, and we're excited to have her, that she accepted.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Pecanow?
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B2, Candidate for Graduation. Recommended motion to approve Soba Petro as a candidate for early graduation with the class of 2022 contingent upon her successful completion in the meeting of all state and local requirements for graduation. It is unusual but legal that a student completes their high school obligation earlier than their class. Soba Petro is technically currently a member of the class of 2023 and has met her requirements. Therefore, she can be graduated. You have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Moved by Mrs. Moses, second by Mr. Heckman.
Yes, as you said, this is an uncommon thing, but it does happen. We usually have several of them a year. Soba has completed the necessary requirements for graduation, or she will by the end of this year, so she's going to be graduating early, and I believe that her and her family are traveling out of the country when she's done.
Well, good. Congratulations to her.
That's very early.
Very early. That's impressive. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pecanow?
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B3, Opsi Resignation. Recommended motion to approve the resignation of Monica Gambino, cafeteria employee at Solon High School effective December 4, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mr. Patton?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses.
Yes, Miss Gambino is resigning for personal reasons, and we wish her the best.
Great, thank you. Pecanow?
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B4, Home Instruction Tutors. Recommended motion to approve Melissa Kramer, Karen Davidoff, Cynthia Kyler, Julie Moschberger as home instruction tutors for the 2021-22 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Moved by Mrs. Thomas?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses.
Yes, when we have students that can't attend school for whatever reason that is, due to either health concerns or something similar, we provide home instruction for them so that they can make up the work that they have missed in the interim to go through. These home instruction tutors are hired by the district for a specific student, for a specific period of time, and when they are done, they are released from that duty, and new home instruction tutors need to be hired if there's a new student available.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pecanow?
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B5, Substitutes. Recommended motion to approve the following individuals as substitutes on an as-needed basis for the 2021-22 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mr. Patton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heckman.
Yes, as you can see, there's a couple of subs here. We do need more. We still need more. I know I make a plea for this at each Board meeting, but we need the substitutes as we're still having high incidence of staff absence and people not being able to come to work, and so, we need substitutes to fill in those gaps for when our teachers can't be available. So, if you go online, you can apply to become a substitute teacher, and as long as you pass all the necessary checks, we can bring you on as a substitute teacher at our next Board meeting.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecanow?
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B6, Supplementals. Recommended motion to approve supplemental contracts of the following individuals, and they are listed below. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mrs. Moses?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, these supplementals are all for positions that needed to be filled. They aren't new positions. They are positions that either through resignations or they were still vacant because nobody had applied for them. That's what these are for.
Great, thank you. Pecanow, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B7, Non-District Pupil Activity Permit. Recommended motion to approve a non-district pupil activity permit contract to the following individuals, and they are listed below. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mr. Patton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heckman.
Yes, this is similar to the supplementals. These are for, or this individual is someone who is not currently a district employee, and so, they need a non-district pupil activity permit. But again, this is not for a new position. This is for an existing position that needed to be filled.
Great, thank you. Mr. Pecanow?
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
B8, Bid Award. Recommended motion to award a contract to Milky Mechanical, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder for the Solon High School chiller plant replacement project, water tower A in the amount of $324,650. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mrs. Moses?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heckman.
Yes, this is part of our ongoing repair costs for making sure all of our HVAC and associated components are up to date and completely refreshing the air in our buildings. The nice thing about these three projects, in fact, are they're all going to be done with federal monies that we were getting, or ESER II funds are what they're called, which are funds given for COVID that enable us to make improvements or to support the schools to go through it. So, all three of these next projects are projects that will be paid for by those funds so they will not come out of our general fund budget or our capital expenditures. This particular project is for the Solon High School chiller, which is a way that we keep rooms cool. We have updated the HVAC facilities in all of the buildings. In this particular instance, this will help some rooms that might have had trouble being cooled to be cooled better in the coming year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Pecanow?
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B9, Bid Award. Recommended motion to award a contract to Milky Mechanical, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder for the Solon Middle School gym cooling and chiller plant replacement project in the amount of $1,097,217. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, similar to the previous project, these are being paid for by ESER funds. This is the middle school HVAC unit was actually the original unit from 25 years ago, when more than 25 years ago when it was installed. So, I know '91, actually, it's way older than 25 years, actually. So, it's 30 now. It's amazing how quickly that goes, but that's going to be replacing that and adding cooling as well as heating to the gymnasium at Solon Middle School.
Thank you. These projects will then presumably over the summer then, or?
That is correct. These are all going to happen over the summer. I think it's important to note, we went early for these projects because lead times on all of these things due to COVID have been extended out. One of the real strong positives for doing it this early is it's been able to save us a tremendous amount of money. Even though there are ESER funds that we're using for these things, those aren't infinite numbers of dollars, and we want to make sure we're still being prudent, but doing this actually saved us almost $300,000 by going as early as we did. We had more bidders for these projects than I can remember in the 10 or 11 years that I've been looking at these. We had over nine bidders for some of the projects, which is way more than we normally have, and I think a lot of that has to do with how early we went to bid for this year.
Good. Awesome, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Pecanow?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes.
Item B10, Bid Award. Recommended motion to award a contract to Synergy Mechanical Contractors, the lowest responsible bidder for the Board of Education HVAC improvements project in the amount of $273,700. May I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Moved by Mrs. Thomas?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses.
We are the last to get things, and this is the last major HVAC project that we have. There'll be some smaller ones throughout the years as we go through. If you'll recall, several years ago, we replaced the cooling unit in the building here because[1526.13] the building here because the cooling unit had failed. Well, the boiler is actually the, the boiler and heating systems in this building are actually the original boiler system from when it was a library decades and decades ago. So it's well past the time for that to be replaced. And I know it doesn't seem like the heat doesn't work in this particular room right now, but it, it in fact, it in fact is in, in need of, of being replaced, so.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mrs. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. Item B 11, tuition reimbursements. Recommended motion to approve tuition reimbursements to the following individuals, and they are listed below. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Patton.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moses.
Mrs. Glavine, these were previously approved, and they meet our district criteria.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecana.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Moses.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine. Yes. That concludes our business items. Moving into information items and other reports to the board. Item C one is the building usage report. All outside organizations must request a building permit to utilize any district facilities. Enclosure C one identifies the permits that were approved. Item C two, the 2022-23 school year calendar. Mr. Bolden.
Yes, as you could see, we had sent it here. There's copies out, out there available for people to take a look at. There's two meetings that are necessary to approve the district calendar for the coming year. The first year is a C item where it, it's presented to the board and the community to go through. After people have had an opportunity to share any questions or things that they have, we will put the calendar back on to the board agenda at our subsequent meeting on January 10th, so that it can be voted on and adopted for the coming school year. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out about the calendar this year because some things happened this year that haven't happened before. We had a parent and several students come to, to myself, as, as well as Aaron Short, to talk about the possibility of adding additional holidays to the calendar for the Lunar New Year, as well as Diwali, which are two holidays, which are two holidays that are celebrated in, in several eastern countries, as, as well as in the United States. We actually had fireworks for Diwali this year and at Twinsburg this year for the first time that I can remember. They actually, the students actually circulated a petition that got a tremendous number of signatures asking for those. So I wanted to take this time to explain why the holidays that we have are on our calendar, as opposed to why they're not. We have, right now, if you'll look, we have certain holidays. We will have the winter holiday break, we have Easter, we have Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah. These are all holidays that are on our district calendar right now, whereas a holiday like Diwali or the Lunar New Year, those are holidays that are not on our calendar. The reason why those aren't on our calendar has less to do with the actual religious significance or the cultural significance of those holidays, as it does with the operational necessity of how many students are actually not in school on those days. We have a policy in the district that if students are taking, we have a policy in our district that if students are taking a day off for a religious or, or cultural significant holiday, we do not hold them accountable for them. There's actually a special code in our system so that the students will not be held accountable for those days to go through it. We also speak with our teachers to encourage them not to assign extra work on those days and making them aware of those days. But in the case of the Jewish holidays, in the case of the winter holiday, in the case of Easter, so such a large portion of our students take off for those particular days, it necessitated us making those holidays to not have school, so that such a large number happened. If we see those sorts of trends happening with other holidays, then we would look to take steps to adjust our calendar again to do that. But until we get those, we wouldn't make those changes. I know that that's kind of a catch 22, because some of our kids don't want to miss the school and, and they think it's important. But it is where we stand in terms of why we have the holidays that we do and when we do it. That being said, we are going to reemphasize with our staff about those particular holidays to make sure that they are not assigning work during those days, or assigning heavy work during those days, so the students can participate in their cultural and religious festivals that they need to.
Thank you. Appreciate the update on that.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Kevin? Yes. Is, is there a reason why graduation has not been posted on here yet? Is because it hasn't been determined?
We don't, we don't typically post the graduation on this calendar. It's posted on the general calendar going through.
Is it typically the same date, though?
Yes, it would be. If we were looking at when graduation would be for next year, let me take a look at the calendar. It would most likely be, and I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but I want to make sure I get the right date for you. It would most likely be on May 25th. Would be the most likely date for graduation.
Any other questions? Item C three, Regano Early Learning Center Information Program. Mr. Bolden.
Yes, on January, I want to make sure I get the right date. On January 13th, from 6:30 to 7:30 via Zoom, we're going to actually be having an information night about the Regano Early Learning Center's preschool program. Our preschool program is a special needs program coupled with a peer model. So if students, if students are interested in becoming, going to our preschool, they are there in, I want to call it a 50/50 fashion in terms of special needs students to students that, that are not special needs, and they're considered peer models. It is, the peer model program is actually really appropriate because it gives, it gives some of our special needs students developmentally appropriate peer models that they can look at as they're going through it, and it's an enriching experience for regular education students as well. So if anybody is, is interested in that, again, it is on January 13th via Zoom from 6:30 to 7:30, and we will be posting a, a link to that on our website.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Item C four, COVID update. Mr. Bolden.
Yes, as we communicate to our families Friday night, the schools don't exist in a bubble. We're a direct reflection of the community around us and going through. I, I would say that our, the higher case counts that we're experiencing in school, as of last week, we were at 22 cases. We're on track to be at about that same amount for, for this, this coming up week as well. Those are, those are pretty high. But if you look at where we are in terms of the community, the community is also very high. Looking around at local school districts, they are similar or at a higher proportion than even us as we're going through that. A lot of it is, a lot of it has to do with the community and the school district reflecting what's going on in the community. Higher case counts in the community, higher case counts in the schools. We believe that our in-school protocols, including the mask requirements for students and staff, are helping to minimize those number of students to go through. Vaccination numbers while high are still not, in our, in our younger kids are just starting, and they won't be able to be fully vaccinated for at least several more weeks to go through that. It's important to understand, students who are exposed to COVID-19 outside of a school setting can't necessarily get school exemptions for those things, but we have systems in place now, especially with the new mask to stay protocol. By having everyone masked, it enables, even when we do have cases of COVID, it enables us to keep more kids in school at time by following the new state and local guidelines for, for keeping kids in school. This is our last week before the two-week winter break, and we traditionally see a higher peak after holidays, and we are in the middle of that right now. We saw the first Halloween peak kick in, then Thanksgiving happened, and we saw another peak happen after that. So we've been at that high level due to those. We're anticipating that's going to happen, and then our hope is that two weeks pending the, the holiday, we're going to start to see a, a subsiding about that, as well as a significant portion of the kids becoming vaccinated by then, which will enable us to relook at the protocols that we have now and possibly switch to a, a mask optional situation. It's too soon to tell what the conditions are going to look like mid-January, but that is what our goal is, and that's what we're working towards.
Okay.
Mr. Bolden, can you share the vaccination clinic that we helped coordinate for the younger students? Can you just share the success rate or how many students?
Yeah, it was, I want to say that we had roughly 120 students that participated in the vaccination clinic last week. There's another follow-up to that clinic coming up in January that we're actually going to be offering boosters at as well. It happened not here in school. It happened at the Solon Recreation Department. They worked with there, just so that there wouldn't be any confusion about getting it or not getting it, and making sure that it's a complete parental choice. But it was very well received. The kids, the kids that came to it seemed to tolerate it well. They actually had coloring stations for the kids while they were waiting to check to see if there were any, if any of the kids had any adverse side effects. None were reported, to my knowledge, so that was really good. But it was a really successful event, and we're looking forward to the follow-up one that's going to be happening in early January.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item C five, Mr. Bolden.
Yes, Marilyn Thomas. Legend.
I see, right.
Marilyn Thomas started on the board in 1978.
You know you're embarrassing me.
I know, but you deserve it for all the hard work that you have done. She is, she has served the Solon schools longer than that, because she was an active parent before she was a board member to go through it. She epitomizes what it means for service. Your jobs are thankless. They are jobs that are very hard to do, and you work very hard at them because you care about the kids of this district. And Marilyn, you epitomized that. You've been a tireless champion of this district and the kids in it. I know that you guys moved here in the 60s, and back then, we were about 2,000 students. We're, we're quite a bit bigger than that now, at about 4,600. It was amazing, because when you started on the board is when things started to explode here, with the, with new housing developments going through, through multiple school building additions and going through it. You were there for all of it. You were there when busing was a thing, and we were starting to add more busing to go through. You worked with Joe very closely as part of our strategic planning initiatives and making great partnerships with our families and the community, creating a great working relationship with our, with our, with our local government as well, which is a strong partnership that we keep to this day. You have been tireless in fighting to maintain local tax revenues staying in our community, as opposed to going down to the state where they don't return them back to us. You have done everything between the PTA, being with the athletic boosters, all the things that you have done in this district, you have done without asking for anything, without asking for thanks, without asking for a pat on the back. It's amazing the amount of work. It is rare that you see board members last five, 10, 15 years, but you are approaching 45 years of time. It's, it's a testament to your dedication. It is a testament to the success of our district.
I'm 53, go ahead.
She started when she was 12.
I just want to say, from me, the entire board, the entire community, I just want to say thank you so much. It is a, your service to this community will always be remembered, and I just, I just want to say thank you so much. We love you.
You're going to make me get emotional. We don't want you to get emotional. I just want to thank Glenn Willow and Solon for voting for me for 45 years, and to be working with so many special people. I mean, from our administration, to our teachers, to our custodians, to, to the people of Solon, and I'll miss it, but I'll cry if I say anything. Thank you. You can do that.
Go ahead, you can.
Mr. Bolden, you've said enough, and it's all that I chime in with on behalf of the PTA Council and all the PTA units.
Oh, they're beautiful. Thank you. We'll miss you and all the best for United States. Thank you, I, I'll be around. Amazing, they're beautiful. That's right, we're still gonna, we're still gonna have Marilyn work at Budget Bin because I was a daughter. Oh, yeah. That's that. That's right. Wouldn't be Budget Bin without Marilyn. Right. Thank you.
That concludes the C items, then. We'll move into board reports and other committee reports. This is our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone has anything else they'd like to bring to the board, please step to the microphone and state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Paul Barnes. My address is 14185 Shawnee Trail in Middleburg Heights. I'm gonna give the interpreter a break. I mean, just a pause. I've, I've had the honor of seeing Ivy, the Souches student, blossom in the last few months as a result of her parents embracing the new lifestyle of signing ASL at home. And their willingness to just embrace ASL and deaf culture has just paid dividends in Ivy's development. This, in fact, just yesterday at church, she was so excited to stand up and to sign in, in front of the whole church, an ASL song that we were doing. First time I've seen it, she just lit up. It was beautiful. And that's a, a direct result of the parents deciding to embrace her first language, which is American Sign Language. Being a professional American Sign Language interpreter for the last 10 years, I've seen the damaging effects of language deprivation. I'm sure you guys are well aware of what language deprivation is and the effects on it, it is on, on a, a student and for the rest of their life. If you don't, I would really encourage you to see what language deprivation does to a, to the person. Something you should research is theory of mind, and how somebody cannot develop empathy and emotion, the ability to express emotion if they don't have language. I would hope that the Solon School District would ensure future deaf students to not be subject to this damage, and to not be forced out by the, the, the district's ability to not give the language to the student. It's sad to say that 80% of deaf children are born into homes that aren't like Nick and Jamelle who sign, so that leaves a huge amount of students who come into school districts who need language models. Not every kid who's deaf has language models at home, and 20%, is a huge estimation. In an age that's marked by valuing diversity and inclusion, and you guys just mentioned adding different religions to the calendar, to the school calendar, which is great, I just find it very ironic that this district was unable to provide language access to a student who is a language minority here in your city. I hope that this, that future deaf students are not going to be subject to this unfortunate turn of events. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Julie Morven, 36980 Valley Forest Drive. I just want to follow up to the COVID update and the conversation about masks. So we keep talking about cases, and this is the weekly email that we keep getting about the number of cases. And I think, considering the fact that the goalpost keeps moving, it's time that we put something tangible associated with those cases. What it means, what we're looking for, because I don't think it's a debate at this point that masks, vaccines, they continue to, they don't prevent from transmission of COVID. We all know that at this point, so that's part of the science that everyone keeps talking about. So I think it's important to have an honest conversation and see what kind of analysis we have relative to other districts, to other counties with optional mask mandates, no mask mandates, what that looks like in terms of the data. Because when we just look at the cases alone for COVID, without looking at the strap cases, without looking at the flu cases, without looking at, you know, heart attacks, stroke, depression, suicide cases, we don't track those. We just track COVID. So I think that a lot of the parents in this district are very capable at looking and analyzing the data, along with the school district itself. And I think that a lot of us would appreciate that transparency, in terms of what information, what sites, what reference point you're using, what comparative analysis you're looking at. Because statistic is statistic, data is data, and it's only as good as the person who's looking at it and analyzing it. And for me, having a data analysis background, I, I don't know what that weekly email means when it just gives about, you know, the information on the cases. The other part of it is, case is a case. We're not talking about hospitalization, we're not talking about anything else. So as I mentioned, I would like more transparency on behalf of myself and a lot of parents in this community. I would like to see more data, more reference point in those weekly emails. And as I've mentioned in some of the conversations that we've had before, and meeting that we had with Mr. Bolden, too, that some of the data from communities that do have optional masking has results that is no different than what our results look like. And I think this is the time when we start talking about it, especially after the winter break, because, as I mentioned, the goalpost keeps moving. So I think we need to have something more tangible at this point. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Seeing no other comments, we'll move into board reports and other committee reports. Mrs. Siegel, anything additionally?
No.
Mrs. Glavine. Mr. Bolden?
No, Mrs. Glavine.
Pecana.
I would just like to say to you, Mrs. Thomas, that, I don't know, summing up, you know, I talk to my boys all the time about, you know, we can only be so lucky, the only thing we can hope for is to be surrounded by wonderful people every day. And I think it's as simple as that, people that make you feel better at the end of the day, and at the beginning of the day, and throughout. And you've always done that for me. I think that's the kind of person you are. You make people feel better, and you're a good person. And I wanted to thank you for that, as a, as a board member, and just as a person, and I'll miss you.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Don't make me cry. That's the, that's the theme here, huh? Don't make me cry. I'm very excited.
Mr. Patton.
Well, I wrote something up for Marilyn. I wrecked my brain for a good part of the weekend, and so I called this Marilyn R. Marilyn. Forty-four years of continuous public service here on the Solon Board of Education is a long time. A lot of service. Think of all the activities you attended. Games, concerts, school plays, graduation ceremonies, and meetings, meetings, and meetings. You have certainly set a high bar. It seems unlikely that anyone else will ever match it. You have shown us all what commitment to public service truly is. I would like to thank your husband, Tom, for supporting you through your considerable service to Solon Schools. He's a good man, and I know that he is very proud of you.
Thank you.
I respect you greatly as a colleague. It's been an honor to serve with you, myself, for only 10 years. You've contributed so much in terms of knowledge, history, and honest, critical thinking in your time in this building and at this table. You and I have shared several trips down to the Board of Elections over the years to obtain petitions and later to file them, and we had some enjoyable and interesting conversations. I will miss you as you retire from the board, but I hope your spirit will remain with us. I wish you much good luck, relaxation, enjoyment, far into the future, and I hope our paths will cross again many times on down the road. Good luck to you, Marilyn, and thank you so much.
Thank you, that was so nice.
Thank you very much. Believe me, they'll cross. I'll be here, I'm not dying.
It will be, call you.
That's a tough act to follow. I did not have prepared words, but I do want to thank you, Marilyn. I'm the newest member on the board and you welcomed me and I learned so much from you and made me feel a part of the team, being the new guy. And you set the bar high and I hope to be able to do that for Michelle when Michelle takes her seat. She's got big shoes to fill. But your guidance and your leadership is going to be legendary. We will be talking about Marilyn Thomas for many generations to come.
Kind of like Abe Lincoln?
As an anecdote, I didn't realize you started in 1978. My family, I lived in Solon for three or four years while I was in middle school and beginning part of high school. And I was at Orchard in 1979 and then Arthur Road in 80 and 81 and then the high school. So you were a board member while I was a student, so that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's kind of. No, not really old. No, you just, you bring a lot of wisdom and openness and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you.
Mr. Heckman?
Well, I mean, I'll keep it very short. You know, thank you very much. We will continue to work at Budget Bin and you live right around the corner. I will say.
Walk the dog down.
Well, last but not least, certainly Marilyn, you and I have been friends for a long time. We've worked together for many, many, many years as colleagues on the board and in different projects and strategic planning throughout the district. You know, there's one thing that Marilyn has always brought to the board and that was a historical perspective on how we got to where we are and what happened before maybe some of us were here and why certain things are done the way they are. But, you know, your dedication to students all these years has never changed. Your always, your values with regard to education and putting students' needs first have been unprecedented. You have never, never strayed from your course of what is best for students every single day, every student, every day. And I know that that's something that you live by and that's mattered to you. I know "thank you" seems really inadequate, but the continued success of the Solon City Schools speaks volumes. And I can assure you that your legacy will be remembered always. So thank you so much from the bottom of all of our hearts. You have been a true joy to work with and just a truly valuable person to the Solon Schools.
I really appreciate what all of you have to say. I can't tell you, I'm going to cry. I'm not saying anything.
Well, you know that we certainly appreciate everything that you have done.
Thank you.
And at that point, I will let you make the first motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move.
You move? Second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Moses? Mr. Pecan, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. Thank you and thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Oh, so one more thing, thank you from the PTA. From the PTA, I really appreciate it. It's one of my favorite colors and smell great, even through a mask.